I call to order the Board of Trustees regular meeting for January 17, 2023, and the time is now six o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give an invocation?
By your head to me. Your Honor, thank you for this day and thank you for sunshine that you gave us in the middle of winter and a nice day. Thank you for the citizens of our township and our freedoms that we enjoy. And I pray that you give those who are out defending our freedom and to protect us, who help us when we are injured or in need, and help those families as they serve in their weapons. Amen.
Please, Lord, give us a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please. Row call, please, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here. Thank you. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I do have a discussion on this. I'm disappointed that after our last special meeting where the parliamentarian indicated that the agenda should be sent out as a draft to the entire board and request agenda items, that this was not done. This is a pattern of not wanting to work together as a board from the board president, and I'm thoroughly disappointed again. We have a lot of important issues that need to be addressed, and I would like to motion to add to the agenda a brief discussion on the sewer capacity issue. There's been an update, kind of a shocking update, on the costs, and also on the vision insurance and the increase of benefits that were improperly received.
Let's see, a second so we can go ahead and row call. Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to set a limit of not more than one speech of three minutes length on the same question on the same day of each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, discussion? Mr. Evans, discussion?
Yes, I'd also like to point out Robert's rules. There is not an order of discussion. It is by those who want to speak. Again, the parliamentarian even suggested that the president brought in, that, you know, three minutes is fine on most issues, but it should not be a one-time issue. That's making a statement. That is not a discussion. Again, the whole point of that was about courtesy, working together. I'm trying to, some refuse to. Again, to limit items into one speech. If we're going to hold to that, we should hold to that, but the other two board members routinely violate it, but only hold one trustee to that. So I would make a motion to amend it, to remove not more than one speech, and leave the three minutes of length in there, and also make that a part of the permanent adoption so we don't have to go through this fiasco every meeting. Apparently, we don't want to listen to the consultant. She wrote that.
So, darling, for lack of, Mrs. Barry, could you please do row call?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes for the December 6, 2022 minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, these were provided just before the meeting. These topics involve some serious topics, and just with a brief overview of this, this does not reflect the meeting whatsoever. This is from December 6. These should have been able to be provided to the board well ahead of time, not the day of the meeting. And like I said, there are errors in here and inconsistencies that do not properly reflect the meeting, and also motions made are not included, which are required by Robert's rules. So therefore, I move to table this to allow proper review of this, and we can address this and hopefully the remainder of the meetings to catch up at our next meeting. Unless this board wants to approve something that hasn't been thoroughly reviewed.
Julie did break them, and I didn't make them. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Barry, were there grammatical corrections?
Yes.
Again, courtesy.
Row call, Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I turn the meeting over to Jim Leonard, please.
I appreciate the opportunity to briefly update you on the strategic plan that's currently underway. This is a recommendation that came from the committee, and they wanted to make sure you guys were aware of the discussions that have happened up to date. So I provided you, I think, late last week, early last week, kind of a brief synopsis of kind of the highlights that were, have been discussed or have been articulated during the meeting. Obviously, up until the final plan is drafted, these comments and highlights can change, and I expect them to change. Mr. Evans has already reached out and asked for some clarification on the one of the maps, but I'll go through all those here in a moment. And then also, at the end of my presentation, kind of give a brief overview of the potential adoption schedule. I can stick to my dates, but then, once it is handed over to the township for the adoption process, you know, I'm unable to control that, the zoning commission, and also trustees have those controls. So with that being said, please let me know if you have any questions. We do meet tomorrow night, talking about economic development, and that will probably be one of the last meetings in terms of content discussion before we start getting into actually the adoption process. So a couple items, again, going through the handout I sent you, looking at density, transportation, land use, parks and rec, education, and transect-based planning. A lot of these probably aren't going to come as a surprise to the trustees, but did want to go through a lot of them. First one under density is focused on how the neighborhoods are built, not necessarily on the density themselves, what amenities are going to be brought to the table, are there park areas, which is, you know, has been discussed, and the committee is looking forward, parks to be built as long as, with the development of new neighborhoods. So yes, density is important. We're going to define gross density and net density because it's really important for developers and townships to talk about density in the same form and fashion. There's two different things. Oftentimes, those get convoluted and interchanged, not on purpose, but, you know, we're going to make sure that's clarified. And then also, making sure that pedestrian connections are made, kind of gives into the transportation. So you don't have these pocket neighborhoods that are developed, whether it's commercial, I guess, safe industrial, because, you know, we'll look at that as well, but having these neighborhoods connect to each other, both vehically and through pedestrian traffic, so you don't have to get on it, you know, if you want to live in Area A and you want to go visit Area B, you don't have to get in your car, go on Columbia Road or Refugee and do that whole thing. Obviously, that's traffic to the roadways that are already congested. Going into transportation, obviously, making sure that there's a public education piece to this. You know, a lot of people think, you know, 310 is the responsibility of the township for maintenance and whatnot, and it's not state, regional, or state, county, there's other different government entities. So all of these things, and it came through really in the survey about things that the township can control, that the state can control, and they often get blurred. Through no fault of anybody, you know, they just want their street plan. They don't care which street is maintained by which entity. So throughout all this, we're going to do, or at least I'm going to try and do a good job highlighting what is the role of the township and the responsibilities of other agencies as well. In the first map, we identified, and this is again something to change, priority roads and priority intersections, that should be the focus of future either study or improvements. No surprise, I bet to anybody sitting in this room, Refugee, Mink, Pike, and then also Columbia, and also a priority to looking at an interchange right next to Amazon, which would, you know, connect that in a parkway directly to the interstate. Again, that's hugely maybe outside of your control, but at least it's in the plan. You, if you work with the TID, you or the county in some form or fashion can say, hey, it's in our plan. This is what, you know, this is what we believe to be a benefit for the community. So that will also be in there. And then also utilizing, and I know you already do, but making sure it's memorialized in the document, continue to use the TID, the Lincoln County Transportation Improvement District, for large complex tasks and projects. Probably the most, probably the sexiest of things that come out of this plan is the land use map. Everyone gravitates towards that, and I get it, but it's really important to take that as well as all the other sections of this town plan when you're making decisions. But in general, we're looking at maintaining agriculture south of I-70, except for the median area around 310 south of 70. Kind of keep that area in agriculture use is not extending, you know, high-density developments in those areas as well. And there's a draft future land use underneath, which trustee Evans has asked for some clarification, which I'll get that to everybody. Utilizing Old Etna as the town center of the township. No offense, if you go to Heath, they don't have a town center, you know? So town centers are ways for people to socialize, become engaged with the community. So turning that Old Etna into a redevelopment opportunity or a development opportunity to be the anchor for Etna, so when you think of Etna, you think of Old Etna. Route 79 in Heath, that's not really a gathering place for folks, for festivals and whatnot. So focusing on the town center, which would be down here in Old Etna. Maintaining the employee and employment areas, State Route 310 and within the business park, not expanding those to what they are here today. So we're not going to be expanding those areas into, you know, past Columbia or past Mink, east of, what is that? Oh, that's Columbia. So keeping those transportation-heavy buildings where they are now and not letting them infiltrate throughout the township. Rural residential will have a smaller net density than planned residential, and I always like to use planned in all of these descriptions because a lot of times, things are just put on a map and, okay, that's good. You know, there needs to be a discussion between the township, the developer, the county, anybody, the farther districts, the schools. It should be well-planned out and methodical in the way which, you know, townships are approving these plans, and it's better for everybody to do so. And so you see planned in a lot of this, as a planner by default, maybe that's just my fault for putting planning in there so much. But another thing that came out in a discussion, I think the entire committee was agreeable to, was having more high-density uses over by Reynoldsburg, sorry, Reynoldsburg, in order to give the incentive for people to stay in the township without having an annex in the city of Reynoldsburg. So almost giving them the option in some form or fashion to have the densities they could enjoy in the city. And you put up a development wall, and you stop that development from, and you stop the city from annexing through. I know there's some jet agreements and whatnot, but just from a land use perspective, utilizing that western boundary is kind of a, more of a way to stable off future annexations would be beneficial. Also looking at senior housing and some other ideas over in that part of the world as well. These are, this next one is kind of new, at least in Lincoln County, utilizing transect planning and form-based code during your zoning overhaul. At the beginning of this process, I always tell people, don't do a comp plan if you're not going to do your zoning resolution. So make sure when this is all said and done and it's adopted, that you turn around and do your zoning, update your zoning resolution. And it's really important, and I think some of the things I mentioned with pedestrian access and connectivity and how things are built are best articulated in a form-based code, which is fairly new for some of the townships. It's not something they do very often, but I think it could achieve a better product. A lot of people often consider it kind of like an urban, like an Easton or Westerville-type density. It doesn't have to be that way. Transect-based planning goes from the least dense, which is like an agricultural field, all the way to, you know, a six-story high-rise building, or not high-rise building, six-story building, and everything in between, how they connect and how a form is built, so that if a building is commercial, let's say, and it goes out of business, the business goes out of business, it can be repurposed, and it doesn't have to just sit there and be an isolate for the community. So how things are built and why they're built is going to be critical, I think, in that form-based code. I think Mr. Merkholder has prepared handouts about that as well. He shared it in our meeting, so he's intimately familiar with what that was, as well as the rest of the rest of the committee. And then also under five, ORC 519, establishing and enforcing architecture standards. Sorry. I also kind of gave you a brief description from our July meeting and a brief map of what that transect may look like. And I want to make sure, I have to do a good job to make sure it's shown in the plan as not another land use map or something like that, something totally different that's going to guide how things are built, not what is built. So your zoning map and future land use map is going to dictate what is being built. The transect map will help dictate how it's going to be built. So that will also, it is a precursor to the form-based code, so it's in there. And then the last two, parks and rec, education. Parks and rec was very important in the committee, also in the survey, but it'd be required with new development and maintained by HOA. There's also opportunities, I know you guys have purchased large tracts of land, you know, I'm not saying the NLB or the homeowners association has to know that, but maybe there's a conversation with the trustees on future development as well. So I have one community in Lincoln County said, we don't want any open space in our developments because if it goes defunct, we're going to have to maintain it. So we don't want it, and that's fine. That was their decision, and that's their township, they do what they want to do. So this committee has decided, or at least recommended, that open space be part of residential developments. And then education, allow and encourage a school district during the development and the review of the plans, as well as take a hard look, and this is me personally saying, you know, take a hard look at how multifamily really affects a school district. You know, I did an analysis of the schoolchildren that live in the apartments there, Columbia 40, there's not that many. Schoolchildren do not live in apartments, and if they do, it's not very long. So I know that's a hot topic with students and getting into the school district, but take an honest hard look at that, and that would be a recommendation because it's a misperception that apartments just kill school districts. They don't. And so making sure how it affects the schools, how any development will affect the schools is very important. So those are kind of the highlights, and then the adoption schedule on the back. Oh, I did a heat map of the school district children as well. So these are all, obviously, will be bigger as part of the plan. But running down the schedule, tonight, we're here, tomorrow night, we have our next meeting. And February 8, the plan will be in front of the committee for review, give the committee a couple of weeks to make comments, and then we come back two weeks later for the final review, in which I hope, but not necessarily require a recommendation to the zoning commission. And so the zoning commission will then take it, schedule a public hearing in, oop, my date is wrong, in April, and then hopefully it lands on your desk sometime in May. Again, I can only get it to the committee, and then the committee, you know, gets it to the zoning commission, then it's, I'm just along for the ride. You know, we'll make sure they have the information that's needed for the adoption process. You don't have to adopt it this way, but I've always told the townships to adopt it similar to what the process is for zoning code update, a zoning map update. The ORC does not specify how you do it, but it's good practice to do it the same way in which you adopt the zoning map requirements. So that's kind of how it lays out. Obviously, those are something to change depending on how it plays. That is all I have for this evening.
Have some questions. Thank you for that presentation on that. Just real quick, I know you said you were going to get the legends to me, but PD on the land use, what is that?
Plan employment.
Employment, okay. NC?
NC, neighborhood commercial.
And then, when you give me the other, you know, the other ones, the legends for the transect map, because those aren't there, cut the G1, 2, 3, and if you could include the proposed densities and stuff like that, because just the title would be not that informative. I mean, I'm glad we're moving along on here. Is there any way, and I brought this up before, requested, to do two meetings a month to speed this up like you did at St. Albans? And that, just because we've got landowners here that they're waiting on this for us to kind of decide what we're going to do, and we're still waiting on four months. We've got all the data, and you've got all the information. I don't know if the CAC members can accommodate that, but it just seems like moving it forward more quickly, not in a rush manner, but, you know, a month between review by the CAC and then you make changes, just seems to me to be a little extended. With all the push for development, and I think a lot of people are waiting to see what's going to be going on.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I can probably push my number three up a week. And then, or at least, I tell you what, maybe I get it out a week before, so February 1, and then still meet on the 8th, and then the committee can look at it prior. You know, that's a commitment from the committee, it's going to have to do it prior.
Just a suggestion, and I don't know if the committee would want more time to mull it over, or it's just like I said, it's...
And then also too, if you, you know, these are your regular scheduled meetings for your zoning commission and your trustees, you can throw in special meetings to speed the process up there as well.
So I don't think that, the zoning commission's not dealing with anything. I think they've been told to kind of stand down, which I think they should still be reviewing the use codes and, because we've got other fueling, they allow the semi-fueling, and those things need to be addressed, and I don't know what they're about, but like I said, it's, you know, expedited but not rushed, I think is what we should be looking at.
Okay.
And it's just my suggestion.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. See you tomorrow night?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on over to public comments, which are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record.
Teresa Overchop, 484 Trail West. One of the things I would like to see, the actual survey results that were put out, to see how our survey results go across to the components of plan that they are proposing, what the people actually said is what I want to hear, what did our residents actually say. The other thing I was like, if we're beginning a new year, it's time to start looking at new forms, ways to finance roads, sidewalks, equipment for the township, and in the process of getting the new township administrator, the consult or trustees need to start looking for forms of funding, grants, gifts, using jet money or whatever to help with cost of road, cost of connecting the sidewalks to where they need to connect to, and any other project that the community needs, because, you know, time runs out very quickly. And I know there are a lot of grants and a lot of things that have certain dates that have to be done by. We shouldn't have to wait till the administrator gets hired. He may be two or three months behind getting the grant because of the fact that it hadn't been started earlier. So I just want to make sure that we are looking at ways to help fund, so we're not using just the township money, but other sources to help finance improvements to edit township. But, and then the third thing I had was, I know we've talked about security cameras and a certain member having access to looking at them, but nothing has been talked about tampering, willful tampering of the security cameras, which to me is the crime and should be supported to the prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Tom Adderick, 64 Gala Avenue in Ohio. First off, Mr. Vance, I have a heck of a good memory, and that's why I want to start off with. A few months ago, I sent you an email asking for a clarification on my old storage for the drainage issue. I had a couple citizens ask me about that. Never got an answer from you. Can you provide a clarification on that, sir? Has the drainage issue been resolved? What is the status of it? Where do we stand now? What are the future plans of it? Any update? Ah, nothing. Okay, moving my along, not surprised. Let's talk about the kangaroo court. Okay, now, a few months ago, well, no, initially when you were, when the elections came up, I was told by Roseland that we have no desire to work with Mark Evans. And back then, that's when this whole mess started. And I could see, you know, I've been gone for a few months, and things have gotten worse, what a surprise. Then you hold a few weeks ago a kangaroo court, whereas, see, this is the misconception. You guys are public servants. You work for us. We don't work for you. That's the misconception. We didn't hire, or we didn't elect two trustees, we elected three trustees for the work to be divided up evenly. And that's what us citizens want, you know, be it for Mark Evans or against Mark Evans, we're all citizens, we all want three trustees to work on behalf, on our behalf, for our wishes and desires. Now granted, okay, they may not be, they may have different viewpoints, but the whole bottom line is, there's three trustees where that work is supposed to be divided up evenly without the politics. Therefore, I propose, since the kangaroo court was totally illegal to begin with, that a mutual third party conduct those placements and put all three of you equally in three mutual positions where you're all doing equal work. That is not unreasonable, that is not against any of you, but it simply defines the work up as it should be, as we, the citizens, desire. I don't know how many times I hear every day, I listen to recordings, you get the same stuff over and over, we're begging you to work together, we're begging you to just work together and get things done in a positive manner. Once in a while, a flash comes by, you do it, and it's so nice and encouraging. Why can't you all do that continually? That way you stop the bickering, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a correction to my citizen remarks on January 3rd. The meeting in question was October 4th, not October 2nd, as I stated. I corrected the sheriff's report and willingly provided my name to be included in the revision, unlike the coward who reported the lie. As an observation from a person, from the personal attacks at the January 3rd meeting, I noticed that what I said at the CAC meeting wasn't in question, only the delivery. Truth trumps presentation. I'll work on the latter. And just for the record, in all of my 75 years, I've learned more from the people I don't always agree with because they challenge my ideas and priorities and force me to look at a situation or a problem differently. Always agreeing does not mean always productive. In fact, it can be stagnant and downright paralyzing. And for another truth, it was not amusing for Mr. Evans to be excluded from all 15 township committee obligations. It was a vindictive and petty power play, but it does show transparency as two-thirds of our trustees continue to expose themselves for who they really are.
Several things I'm going to cram into three minutes, hopefully. The new community authority has a tentative meeting on January 25th. This is to discuss the final signature that we have been waiting for months on, which is Skennell FedEx property, to fulfill their obligation to sign up for the community NCA for when the park is completed so we can begin building infrastructure and creating a park in it. I am formally, publicly requesting Mr. Johnson to add me onto the agenda so I can speak about that meeting at the next board trustee meeting. I feel the community needs to know what's going on in the new community authority meeting. It is a public meeting. I know we all get sick of going to public meetings, but a lot of us attend here, so I think it's very important that everybody knows what's going on and where our park is progressing. January 9th, there was an article in the Newark Advocate that said the IT vendor that this board had voted to use was hacked and that all of their clients were affected. There's been no report, mention, or public anything from this board or from the township as a whole saying how the township was or was not affected. I think that needs to be stated, needs to be also mentioned publicly during the next trustee meeting, maybe today if possible. Administrator article and then Advocate talking about the new administrator, administrator that the township is going to hire, stated that Mr. Vance will be leaving us once the new administrator's up and running. Although I do personally feel that Mr. Vance left us after the September 7th meeting, which was the last meeting that Skennell was discussed, because no other update's been mentioned and Mr. Vance gets paid to sit here and we don't. The road department, I'm glad to see that there's issues that being addressed, the road department, that the township's going to be re-embroidered. I presume you brought that to the floor, Mr. Johnson. Ongoing advisory services, I feel that our example of ongoing advisory services doesn't leave me a warm fuzzy feeling of what this new proposal that's on the agenda tonight's going to entail. Jet applications. Here we go again. We'll hopefully be able to research our appointments that are made tonight with the majority of the board. I hope you've had a chance to review the information because we're going to ask you later who you're voting for, because I'd like to know if you know who you're voting Direct point of communication for the, sorry, direct point of communication for the legal, I just feel that the board president does not need another direct point of contact or anything, it needs to be shared equally with the board. Every dollar that's spent in this township needs to be accounted for. That's why on December 6th, when state security sponsored $920 for a report, we didn't get the report, I'd like to hear the report before we spend more money. Thank you.
Shal Marie Eppach, 114 Royalty Drive. There's a lot of great things that our representatives, trustees, committee members, friends, neighbors have done and said, or has passed a couple of months, and I'd love to get into that, but three minutes is very fast. And there's other things that I see as perpetual gaslighting and misleading that I'm surprised I didn't hear any of it yet tonight, but over the past several months, we should hear the same things over and over and over. I have one to share my personal insight, because I feel I myself was being misled on a couple fronts, but then I thought, well, wait, I was there. The first one was regarding appointments, the Potascola Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee, it is by invitation only, and it, Mr. Evans led us to believe that Roslin was never showing up, regardless of what. Well, he was our point of contact and he was the one invited, and he didn't show up either, but he didn't know that. And I had asked, you know, sent a trustee, if you can, if you can't make it, because things happen, I get it, but it's going to happen. He did some of our residents and friends and get a great update and everything, but I'm disappointed I wasn't one of my trustees there with us. The same, kind of the same situation for the Potascola Area Monthly Meetings. Roslin came for the very first meeting last year, and then Mr. Evans was designated to come meet with us, and he did a couple times and it was great, and he felt that, but he only came a couple of times. And no, Roslin did not, but that's because she was not designated, and I just felt we were led to believe that she just wasn't showing up. And I wasn't totally at the taste. We've also heard over and over, zoning commission hasn't met in months. The minutes are on the website, and I was at the zoning commission, I was there, the little meeting, stuff was going on. Thought we needed some clarification on that. We also heard over and over that Mr. Johnson and Mrs. McKee conspired to remove Judy from our group, a valuable member of our group, but when I was listening to the meeting, the reason was they were acting in response to other communications, that other group members have, I don't know, called, emailed, I know I heard them say email us. So I thought that was a little misleading as well. We also have heard over and over and over, the CAC survey is several months late, and I've already addressed this one, because as another, at least one of the residents, it was later than we wanted, and there were a lot of delays, but it wasn't all because of Mr. Leonard. There was other things that went on, whereas we didn't even approve it until October, so thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments tonight? Gary Brookholder, 254 Trail East, just a couple items. I attended the parliamentary training and glad I came, I learned a few things. I think it's always important when you can learn more things, but I am disappointed because the common theme there was courtesy and transparency, allowing all members of the board of trustees to put items on the agenda, items that are important to this community. Some of my fellow residents have alluded to that correctly, that there are things we want to know. And since all the reports now have been taken off the agenda, it's kind of hypocritical to attend that and have two trustees, the president and the vice president of this board, not even willing to consider any amendments. And that needs to change. We had the training, so you're correct, Mr. Evans, I know many of the items you've tried to put on here, there are things that need to be discussed by this community and need to be discussed in public. I also wanted to report that several of us residents attended the county commissioner meeting last Thursday, and during the open session, there was a very good discussion on Skennell and the lack of progress. The Lincoln County Planning Director was there, two of the three trustees were there, the legal counsel for the commissioners were there. There is still that 40-page punch list. Some items have been addressed, not all of them. We also had the compliance officer there as well for the Lincoln County Planning Department, and they want to know why there wasn't any progress. There are still the two outstanding violations. We also had a member of the Lincoln County Soil and Water there as well, and there are still issues with the stormwater as well, but the discussion was also regarding the zoning violations that still exist with this township. So I've asked you before, Mr. Johnson, you are over zoning, why are we not enforcing the zoning violations that exist at Skennell? It's been well over a year. If you look at the final development plan, the development agreement, they're not in compliance. I've raised the issue with Mr. Singleton, he was gracious enough to meet with us the one day with some of us citizens, got us some additional information, and that information clearly shows they're in violation. And you voted for that development, and you've done nothing, nothing since that's gone in to protect the citizens and the neighborhoods of our community. My question is why? I'm not going to get mad about it, I'm just going to continue to pursue it, and so are the residents of this community. You're not fulfilling your duties as a trustee.
Thank you.
Hey, that's pretty good, bud. Thank you.
I would like to turn the meeting over to trustee Johnson regarding road department purchase.
Oh yeah, I got a couple persons here, you guys have them. And the reason I brought these up, we had a couple things happen. We needed windshield, bracket, and then it was a door with a window broken over the thing from an accident over there too, luckily no one was injured or so forth, but we have those two items under us there. And so I asked for approval for $350, or I guess I'm making motion for $350 paid out to Auto Glass, is it $529 Auto Glass?
Yeah.
I can second, so Kevin's...
These are not normal wear and tear things, that's the reason I brought these up.
Right.
Good discussion.
Discussion.
We need to administer this township properly. This board, I did not vote for it, changed the authorization policy for expenditures, approving these expenditures. Mr. Johnson already violated that limit, and we're only, not even two-thirds of the way through January. We have, these items that we're approving tonight have already been ordered and installed. This is after the fact. These two alone exceed the authorized limit, but then we also have other items, Ace Truck Equipment. If we're going to have rules, we have to stick to them. If not, change them, as I stated, the $2,500 limit and requiring every item to be approved before it's done is not appropriate. And again, Mr. Johnson approving these items tonight after they're already installed, so what are we doing? Do we have policies that we're going to follow? Or we just do that for show and just do whatever we want? We can't do that. So I don't know how we want to resolve this, but, I mean, again, a couple weeks into the month and it's already exceeded. Is there a reason why? These were, were asked to approve these after they're already installed? I mean, I have no, no problem with giving our superintendent and a trustee overseeing the roads that authority, but this board chose to limit the spending authority to $500 in office supplies when we need to do this. Another item on this is purchase a vacuum. We have important matters to address. We can't purchase a vacuum without bringing some full board?
Yeah, we should bring it to the board. Yeah.
This is micromanaging that is going to kill the township, and again, these two items already exceeded the authority. The board president exceeded the legal authority by $31,000. We need to start following the rules and what this board dictates. These are your rules you put in place. You voted for it. You're...
That's not discretionary, that's...
No, any approved purchases, any...
It's an accident, of course.
Every spending is needed. Well...
This is a part for the garage, or, so that's something needed. Also a windshield, I mean, those are...
It wasn't discretionary.
Those are needed items for the garage or the road crew.
But again, this board limited the authority specifically.
President McKee, partner. Trustee Evans had approximately 30 more seconds on some of the discussion.
Again, courtesy. Discussion. Still say, follow the rules, follow the law. It's all matters.
Thank you.
Don't disregard it.
I'll turn the meeting over to trustee Johnson regarding the vacuum. Sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now I'll make a motion that we approve 21, well, 2173 and 56 to DDT, and this is for a door assembly head glass that was all broken out there.
Second.
And again, this was, again, this was already ordered, installed before it was even approved per our policy. I would highly suggest that we change that policy. Don't just have the policy and ignore it like we did with the Conferencing Plan. Put a policy in place. The policy was put into place to control, but we see what happens now, it limits it so much that you can't do the effective work.
What was the door for?
Watkins Street Avenue.
I have a bill, I just wonder what the, what?
One was for the skid steer, one was for the 5500.
The skid steer was 2150, or 217350.
And again, these items are supposed to be approved before they're purchased or off.
Okay, bro call, please, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
No, because it exceeds the limit.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I'll turn the meeting over to trustee Johnson regarding the vacuum.
Vacuum, all right. Our vacuum is broken for township, like I looked at, somebody can fix it, so we were going to pick one out, and I was going to not exceed $400, so I'm just, I have vacuum not exceed $400, and Laura can finally keep it over it.
You make a motion, I'll spunk out, go ahead in seconds. And discussion?
Yes, again, we have very important matters to attend to. You refused to put my agenda items regarding illegal benefits to elected officials and all kinds of other matters, but we want to discuss a vacuum that under the prior board, a prior year, and all boards prior, had that authority to do. We're a $10 million organization. We're trying to micromanage everything, and it's, we've got to get into proper administration. We shouldn't need a board to buy a vacuum.
Oh, that's true.
But I have a discussion. We were, we review all bills, we review all purchases, if there's an issue, that's when we bring it up.
So you wanted, you said $400, is that what you...
Not exceed $400.
Not to exceed, okay. Okay, go for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. All righty, I move to approve the total certified mileage 5500, 55,197 miles on the H...
55,000, 197 miles.
Is it point?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that, sorry, Lord. By .197 miles to the H Department Transportation for the 22, 2022 Township Highway System Mallett Certification. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, discussion?
Okay, discussion? Discussion?
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to contract with Julian and Grub to provide the ongoing advisory service not to exceed... Ms. Barry, there's a couple of them on there. I didn't know which one.
When you make the motion, we probably need to help you resume out.
Yeah.
This is the monthly at 52.
Yes. You're going to do monthly, or do you want to do the yearly? Is it safe?
The monthly at 5280.
Okay. So not to exceed 5280 a month?
A year.
No, that's a month on here. Forty, oh, 440...
A month.
A month, and the 5,280 is yearly. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I don't know if we want to limit this, because there's additional costs. Julie's there, the training, $500 for training, or are they saying that's included in it? They discount that training fee, so there's actual training fees. So 500 per training for in-person and 400 for training for virtual. So I would state, again, so we don't get into the issue that we had with the cell phone, where we don't have proper authority to put a contract cost of 5280 plus the training, one training session in person, maximum.
The cost for these trainings will be 500 per training, in-person training, or 400 for training for virtual training.
And it says trainees.
Separate contract.
So there could be multiple.
So we want it to be like a...
I don't think we want to limit it out, or not.
Well, maybe add a thousand to it, just more than over...
So it gives her the option if she needs or feels like she needs the training, or would it benefit her, I would, I would, I offer amendment to increase it to 62, no more than 6280, without further ado, actually.
Probably give you a cleaner if you just have a restated motion. If they just withdraw it and restate it, it makes it easier.
I can withdraw it for now.
Don't put any of my votes in.
But I do have, I have a question, since we're still in discussion. Ms. Barry, did you use their training at all for the last year? Because I know we had a contract with them.
I met with them monthly several times, but I didn't need training per se.
Okay.
I mean, it was, I had technical issues or questions and conversations, but it wasn't anything that I needed trained on per se.
So do you think you'll need a training in the future, I mean, something that maybe the...
I mean, it would be nice to have an option in case some major change comes down, but I'd need them for something more, but, I mean... If we put an extra thousand on there and then don't...
Yes, this is there. Yeah. So I will do that motion, so. I move to contract with Julian and Grub to provide the ongoing advisory services not to exceed $6,280 yearly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's limited to three minutes. Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Row call, Mrs. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to contract with Julian and Grub to provide the internal control analysis not to exceed $9,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Which is limited to three minutes. Mr. Johnson, please?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Hi. I'd just like to say, I'm glad we're giving our fiscal officer some support on this.
Thank you. Row call, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the 2023 club membership, members and pay the $200 dues. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Number one, Robert Schules, there is no order of discussion, so I would ask...
I just asked, you know what?
But I would ask, what are we getting on next week? We've had no updates for a year, and this is for larger townships, urban townships.
No, it's not. It's a limit of how many residents, and that's why we're able to be a part of it.
This is one time. But again, we don't have any, any updates, so I don't think this is a benefit whatsoever. So I think it's just wasteful spending unless there's a reason that can be shown why we should intend not just a resume maker.
Row call, Mrs. Barry, please?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
I move to accept the resignation of Eric Nichols and Nicole Washington from the various JED boards. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion is limited to three minutes. Mr. Johnson, please?
Your turn.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I wonder why we weren't notified this earlier? And are these replacements that we're going to be doing going to be advertised? Because I do see we have a resolution already to appoint new members, and I really think that it's important to advertise this, be transparent, not appoint handpicked people continuing in the footsteps of the past boards. There's a lot of people that are willing to serve this community, so I think we should open it up to them. And I only see one resignation here, Eric Nichols. I don't see anything provided by Nicole. Is there a reason why that wasn't...
It all happened in one meeting, in a JED meeting.
There's no documentation of that resignation?
Again, it happened in a JED board meeting.
Which we were not part of. You are the representative.
Mr. Evans, you could, like I said, there was, Ms. Nicole was in the meeting, and she resigned right then, that day, to move to a different position within the board.
What date was that?
The last board meeting. I would have to get back with you on exactly on that date.
In December?
I would have to get back with you on that date. It was back in November.
And why wasn't the board notified before today? This is about transparency.
Mr. Evans, again.
You were a member of the board, and you were the representative.
I am a member of the board, and again, I'm going to say this, she resigned the day of the meeting. She, she got, yeah, so...
They were very about it months later. Which the entire two months plus, we could have been searching for an appointee from maybe Mr. Tard, Mr. Black, anybody that could serve Black.
Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
No, because we don't, we don't have the, this is other one in writing.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. And you know, we're just, this is just for their resignation, Mr. Evans. If you didn't know that, that's what we were just speaking.
Correct. I just have one resignation letter in front of me.
Okay. Yes.
Perfect. I can double check. Mr. Alberts was at that meeting, but he needs something from Nicole, but you're adding, we'll provide it to him.
Through, through Mr. Alberts. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on over to Resolution 230117 dash, would that be 01? I move, Resolution Appointing Members of the Joint Economic Development, which is District JED Board, as presented the following.
I don't have a copy of the resolution.
It's there. Section 1, JED 1. The board hereby appoints Jackie Katz to JED 1, Position 3, for the term of August 30, 2022, to August 29, 2026. The board hereby appoints myself to JED 1, Position 4, for the term August 30, 2021, to August 29, 2023. And these are just replacing where Eric moved for myself. That's, that's what that is, since he resigned. Section 2, JED 2, the board hereby appoints Jackie Katz to JED 2, Position 3, for the term of August 21, 2021, to August 20, 2025. Section 3, JED 3, the board hereby appoints Jackie Katz to JED 3, Position 3, to the term of August 21, 2021, to the August 20, 2025. Section 4, the board, JED 4, the board hereby appoints Jackie Katz to JED 4, Position 3, for the term of August 30, 2022, to August 29, 2026. The board hereby appoints John Canard to JED 4, Position 4, for the term August 30, 2019, to August 29, 2023. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
I got it. None right now.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, well, if we're going to discuss the individual members, should we be doing this in executive session? Since this is, when you read the names out, that is the first I ever heard of those names. This is not transparent, but if you wish to discuss, because I do have an issue with one of those proposed who harassed residents during a township meeting, and it is on video, that his conduct is unbecoming of any appointment. So I would be very much against that. If you're going to remove a member from the CAC for vocalizing her disagreement with the process, how can you appoint a member who would behave in such a manner? So there's a lot of hypocrisy on this board, and I think it's unfortunately going to continue. But I would again state, why are we not putting this out to the public instead of handpicked supporters going on to committees and yourself? And it's just not right. It's not transparent. You can say you're transparent as much as you want, but your actions don't show it. It's like that movie Mars Attacks, when they say, "We're here for peace," as they're vaporizing everybody. It's just not so. So I would move that we table this and advertise these positions, interview, and then fill them as every other public entity does. This is about transparency and proper administration of this township, not stacking boards with handpicked individuals. If not, just give a second. I have some more discussion after that, if we're not going into executive session.
God, for lack of a second.
Okay. I would move that we move...
Ms. Barry, row call, please?
I still have discussion, and I'm making a motion. I'd move to go into executive session to discuss the appointments. Otherwise, I'd be forced to discuss it in public, and I don't think that's proper.
I can defend myself. I've got a perfect record.
I've made a motion.
Is there a second?
Okay, well, I have a discussion. No, I have, I have some time left. That individual, like you said, John Canard harassed during a meeting.
Okay, we're going to move on. Mrs. Barry?
Kangaroo Court.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
November can't come sooner than...
Another threat, Mr. Evans? Is that another threat? It's fact. Okay. Remember, 17,000 people, and it's only a few of your, that you keep threatening us with. It has to stop, and it's on record.
It'll be over in November.
I move to approve the proposal for the state securing the amount of $9,973, to not exceed that amount. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm going to pull that motion back, please. Proposal back. I'm sorry, Mrs. Brown. I move to approve the proposal from state security for the amount not to exceed $10,819. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
I got to think, thinking it, so. Again, these aren't provided prior, so we have no opportunity to... This is, this is just getting ridiculous by the minute. We have a security system installed at over $9,000, so installed in August, which was supervised by our consultant, Mr. Vance, and our self-proclaimed IT expert, infrastructure specialist, Ms. McKee. Now we're proposing trashing that system, because she got caught covering the cameras with a system that apparently she thinks that she can only control through this new company at a cost of almost $11,000. Now, if you don't want cameras in this room, remove them, it's free. You can actually sell those cameras and probably get a little bit of money back. There's no reason to replace this, and the initial cost was almost $10,000. That's because he's running wires, and you don't have to run wires. You don't have to do any of that. So why are they doing it again? And again, one trustee is appointing herself as the only person who would have access to this, Ms. McKee. It's not right. It's wasteful spending of the township's money, and you're worried about approving a $400 vacuum. Again, Ms. McKee removed the other security DVR from here, NVR, for four days before she turned it over to the investigator. And apparently, it looks like it's corrupted, because he could only access one camera. What did Ms. McKee, the IT infrastructure specialist and computer professional, do to that system? Records were being destroyed. We don't have the proper records policy. They were being illegally overwritten. And we have security cameras in the garage. Ms. McKee is not worried about videotaping those employees only where she's at. It's improper. This is wasteful spending. You don't want the cameras in here, remove them. Mr. Johnson, why, why would you even entertain $10,000 when you removed the three cameras or put permanent plastic bags on them? Giant Eagle has paper bags now, a nickel leech network. Why are we spending $10,000 of the residents' money on a security system that's less than five months old?
Row call, Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
No discussion about others. No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Wow. And he didn't even read this... And he didn't even read this before.
To authorize the president of the Board of Trustees to serve as the direct point of contact between outside legal counsel in the board and to engage any legal services with said legal counsel behalf of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please limited to three minutes. Mr. Johnson?
I have none.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. The point, the authorization should not be the board president because over the last year it has been shown that she does not abide by the board's decision. The board had a $10,000 limit on the outside counsel. She exceeded it by $31,000 and refused to even address it, just continuing to do it until I went to the attorney directly and threatened to go to the bar if that continued. Additionally, she continued, that authorization was only for 2022. There was nothing in 2023. She continued to authorize services illegally, without appropriations, without any board approval, and this has continued. It, it's been so mismanaged and she has directed the attorney not to share information with the other trustees, namely me. Now, the attorney had to do off the book updates occasionally, but even those have stopped now. And again, we have a meeting this Thursday with the prosecutor to deal with these issues. I'm not the only one that is asked for these issues to be dealt with. Our attorney has too. The same attorney that she wants to deal with has been trying to get Ms. McKee to do what's right, but he has to do what he's directed to. So Ms. McKee is weaponizing this outside counsel. She's using it when we have a free attorney with the prosecutor. This attorney was meant for economic development matters only, to replace elders and elders who had a conflict for presenting both sides. She is using it to send threatening letters to our fiscal officer, who is only doing as directed by the prosecutor, again, without any appropriations, without any authority. So Ms. McKee should not be the contact. The resolution allowed all matters to be forwarded from the board. That's what it should be. That we have a discussion in public and authorize those things in public. Ms. McKee hasn't been working on West Licking Development Group. That was never authorized by this board. It's not even our entity. That's a separate entity. Again, it's improper. She's shown that she cannot be trusted to follow the board directions or even the law. So it should remain as a board decision, anything being forwarded to this legal firm. $31,000 in overage last year plus. Rules matter. The law matters.
Ms. Varyn, please?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move Resolution 2301-1702 to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson, please?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Again, uh, it contains items that exceeded the limit. These items were already purchased, apparently not authorized by Mr. Johnson. I'm not saying anything against Roque, but Mr. Johnson has wanted this policy in place, so we should follow it. Uh, the curb tire equipment, that was actually from last year, invoiced from last October. But the ACE tire equipment exceeds the expenditure. Again, we can't continue to operate like that. Is there a reason, Mr. Johnson, that you just want to flagrantly disregard the rules? You and Ms. McKee voted for the rules. Either follow the rules or change the rules to suit proper administration. That's all I have.
Mrs. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
No, because of the exceeded amount.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment of the above listed deals for January as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes, again, for the same reason. We have ACE truck equipment here, exceeded the limit. This, this is doing it after the fact. Again, not the proper way to do it. Um, also, I know there, there was a $400 skid plate. Exceeds the $2,500 limit. When, when are we going to address this confidently, run it like a professional organization? If something's not meeting the needs, like the $2,500 limit, as I stated, you need the trustee and Mr. Coakley to have that authority. But Mr. Coakley's increased because that's been the same limit for how long? We've had inflation, costs rising. It, it, it's how you run a business. And it's just not, doing it after the fact of just, hey, you know, we're going to do it. We're going to violate it and then we'll, we'll just approve it like Mr. Vance said about the legal fees, which was not correct. Um, we can't do that.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. And this is pressy comments. Please limit it to three minutes. Mr. Johnson, please?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. As you can see, again, uh, and even by the words of one of the residents, this board actively chooses not to work together. They want to control everything, everything, and not even in a competent legal manner. It's a shame. Uh, and to address a couple of the points, uh, the Potasculare Chamber of Commerce, the only appointment was for the Economic Development Committee. That is it. We're both free to attend any times and due to my schedule, I did have an advisor who has been working very hard for the residents on both Schenel and Throop and the other matters, uh, attended my place and he actually updates me and provides information, more so than the members of this board. So his participation is invaluable to this township. So it's like we have two administrators. Uh, one, yeah, one that is working with me and for the residents and a consultant that is not. We, we have to deal as a board conflicts of interest. Uh, Mr. Carlisle is, remains on the Taxing Center Review Council and JED Z. He was hired by neighboring entity, Harrison Township, um, as their economic development director. I think that's a conflict of interest that we need to, need to deal with. Also, one of the residents, uh, mentioned she's not hearing more grants. We should be pursuing grants. I tried last year. They refused to. It's free money. Why? I don't, nothing makes sense up here. Nothing, except the need for total control. Everything has to go through one person and that one person actually tells other entities at ODA, at everywhere. Everything goes through her. If I meet with someone in here, within 30 minutes, they get a phone call. Everything goes through her. That's shameful. Again, we're all equal, although Ms. McKee states she doesn't think so. It's, it's just not right. It's not what the residents deserve and it needs to change and I have tried over and over again. But it, even Ms. McKee's own consultant on parliamentary procedure, she ignores because she doesn't want to give up any control. Providing minutes just prior to the meeting, providing, uh, packet materials, finally got packet materials just prior to the meeting that were readily available prior. That's not courtesy, as Briggs says, or Griggs says. That was your own consultant, Ms. McKee.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
To whom?
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
So far.